Time for us to begin. This is the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board for Tuesday, July 6th, 2021. Welcome, everyone. Ask you first to rise. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and then for a moment of silence. And while you are still standing, I would ask that we remember a longtime public servant who passed away recently. Charlie Brothers was Chair of our Planning Commission for quite a number of years. Charlie was energetic and public spirited and had his own opinions on things which he did not hesitate to share. And I had the privilege of serving under him as a member of the Planning Commission. So, thank you, Charlie, for all you have done. And a moment of silence for you. Thank you. Okay, the brief things at the beginning, approval of orders, I think were mostly said. I do believe we need an executive session at the end of the meeting to clear one of the issues that we have. So we will do that then. Just a reminder, Select Board members, please do come in and sign the orders. We have minutes of the meeting of June 8th and June 22nd, and also the informational session that we had. And we'll start with June 8th. People who were available at the present at that meeting, Mary Ashcroft, Joe Donardo, John Paul Fagnant, and Don Chaffee. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 8th?
Move to approve.
Motion's made?
Can I second?
Joe just seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of accepting those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Three ayes have it and one abstention. The minutes of June 22nd, 2021, present there were Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, and Don Chaffee. So it looks like we can't proceed on those. We'll hold those minutes. And then the informational session that we had concerning use of ARPA funds. I believe that was, and I think that was the only people present for that were Don Chaffee and myself. So we're gonna have to just
Hold on that.
Hold on that. Okay. So we take here at this time, comments from any member of the public who is not already on the agenda. Do we have anyone calling in or present who wishes to be heard unless there's an agenda item that you wish to address? Okay. Then we'll proceed along. Thank you. We're going to drop down to, under new business, Item A, Board to Hold Hearing on the Notice of Violation to CNC Fireworks. And we have, well, two things. One is in the, we have present, actually, we should probably do that. Why don't we see who wishes to come up? Attorney O'Rourke and your clients who wish, if you could sit right over there, please? Issue before us is stated in the Notice of Violation. We did issue a firework permit to sell fireworks to CNC Fireworks LLC on June 15th, 2021. As a result of complaint and then investigation by our Second Constable, we received information that CNC fireworks were selling in violation of the permit. So we're here to hear that and we will start, I think we'll start by swearing in anyone who is going to be testifying on this. So that includes John Paul Fagnant, who will not be participating in the decision-making because he is our Second Constable. So he will be sworn in as a witness. Are you also being sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else here that wishes to be heard as a witness on the facts? Okay, so if you two could rise, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give under the matter now under consideration is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under pains and penalties of perjury?
I do. I do.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, since we are, do you wish to be heard at all, Joe, before we start, or?
No, I
Okay.
Wait until time comes. Mr. Hahn was the salesperson that was there, and he's in Connecticut, and I understand he's on the computer, the virtual.
Okay, Mr. Hahn, are you intending to testify today?
If you want me to ask some questions or answer questions, I will.
All right, why don't we, could you raise your right hand, please?
Uh, okay.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give under the matter now under consideration is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under pains and penalty of perjury?
Uh, sorry, I don't, yes, my phone got out there.
Okay.
We have a major thunderstorm coming through right now, and I'm on cellular service, so I don't, hopefully it sticks, I stick with it here.
Okay, so if you are asked a question and you don't hear all of it, could you ask us to repeat it, please?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Second Constable, John Paul Fagnant, could you tell us what occurred and what you did?
Sure, my activity is laid out in my June 30th, 21 memo to the Select Board. I was directed to conduct a surveillance, Joe, these are photographs that I took. I was requested to conduct a surveillance of the firework place and to then request to see copies of the public display permits for fireworks that were sold to Vermont residents. After watching several vehicles, five with Vermont registration, I approached Mr. Hahn, identified myself, and asked to see the public display permits pursuant to the permit that had been issued. Mr. Hahn was not cooperative with me, and he said he would not answer any questions, and he contacted the owner. And then Chip came and told me they don't have copies of those permits. They don't keep copies. They didn't take any copies. And so I reported that to the board.
Okay. And did you do any subsequent?
I did. I did a follow-up surveillance the following day on June 30th. At that time, I observed five sales, two to Vermont-registered vehicles, and one each to New Hampshire, New York, and New Jersey.
Okay, and did you, did you have in mind the permit to sell fireworks in the town that was issued by the Select Board?
Well, I think that was the reason that I was asked to observe because Conditions 6 and 7 require CNC to keep a copy of any public display permit for any sale to Vermont residents. And Chip told me they didn't do that, and they didn't have any to show me.
Okay.
Bill, am I entered into the meeting?
Hi, Don. Yes, you are.
Oh, because I didn't get any confirmation. Okay, thank you, Mary. Well, I just, first of all, you know, thank you for allowing me. I'm still, I'm still sitting here in a hospital bed, and I'm, they're getting ready to discharge me. So I really don't think I can participate in the meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that if you do need a vote, please call my number and I will participate.
Okay, thank you, Don. We do have a quorum. Joe Donardo is on the call. Sharon Russell is here with me. And JP, of course, can't vote on this particular issue, but he is present for the rest. So I wish you speedy recovery and thanks for calling in.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, JP?
That's all I have.
Okay.
So when JP came
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
I did tell him that I did not have any Vermont permits. I didn't have any Vermont permits. Nobody from Vermont bought. I have, at the time, I wasn't, no one had asked me to keep track of out-of-state sales. So I wasn't, I was gonna keep track of these sales to Vermonters for the permit. JP, you mentioned, how could you, from across the street, how, without me keeping track of those records, how could you then come over and me show you that they were from out-of-state? So from that minute that you left, I've taken pictures of every ID with the sales agreement. And there's, that represents the majority of the sales that I've had. Some of them were Vermont cars. They had out-of-state ID. And now I have, just like I told you I would when we shook hands when we left. I took and documented every single one. So I'm hoping that's exactly what you were looking for. I hope that will alleviate any issues because I have not sold to Vermonters, and I've told them over and over and over. I do not sell to Vermonters.
My pictures show you selling to Vermonters, Chip. Yeah, it shows them loading fireworks. You helped them load fireworks in some of the Vermont cars.
Yes, yes, but they have out-of-state IDs. So if you have an out-of-state ID, you can drive a Vermont car, you can be in a Vermont car with someone. I mean, the license plate is a part of the proof.
You told me you didn't ask for ID, and when I suggested you take a copy of everybody's license, you said, "I'm not gonna do that."
I did not say that, sir. I told you
That's what I understood. Well, I know we shook hands, but I understood that to be your position.
I have here the one permit that I did receive from a Vermont. All the other sales are documented, out-of-state sales.
But those are subsequent to when Mr. Fagnant was there, right?
Correct. I did exactly what you asked to prove to you that even Vermonters, some of them have out-of-state IDs and live out of state, or know someone from out of state, or have friends from out of state. So this is represent every single one of those. I did, I told you that night, I was not trying to be flippant to you. I wasn't trying to thumb my nose at the board. I was trying to sell my fireworks. You asked me, which is, this is not, you did not ask me to document out-of-state sales. The minute that you did, I started doing it. So I'm hoping this alleviates the board's issue because I do not sell to Vermont residents without a permit. I have one more that I'm waiting on. Eric Carrera has not received a permit yet, but I was told that he was going to. So I'm hoping that that goes through, so.
When you came into the office today to bring these, to bring in
This is for you guys. This is for the
Those are copies that are available. You've got your own?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Were these on your phone? You showed me?
Phone and tablet.
Did you do that?
This represents five hours that Staples also today is doing this. So I mean no disrespect to anybody here on this board. I never have, not in seven years or six years that I've been here. I'm just trying to run a business. You guys have put drastic, drastic changes. You didn't cause, the judge caused that. That ruled the way he did. Hopefully, next year, Busha and them in the State House will clear these laws up. So that this is, that it's more standard across the whole state. I hope that the board here can see that I've tried to do everything you guys have asked me to do. I am gonna keep trying. People came to me, "Well, you can sell anything you want. Now they're just gonna pull your permit." That's not the point, I said. They pull my permit, that's, I'm not gonna change. I told you, I've stuck to it. And I've had proof, because you've asked for proof, so now I've provided you the proof. The busy time is over. It's just a crawl for the rest of the summer. I've just trickled in business. I mean
Did you, did you understand, did you think that you could sell to out-of-staters?
Absolutely, 100%. 100% that was never brought up, and it is, my competitors are selling, my competitors are selling to out-of-state. My competitors, frankly, are selling to Vermonters and told me I was stupid for not doing so. But I was trying to see the bigger picture. I'm trying to say, next year, when this gets cleared up, I want a place to live. I want a place to work. I want a place to be. So I tried very hard. My sales have dropped a lot. Those nine days that you guys closed me for no reason, they dropped. Nine days without work? The attorney's fees that I had to acquire because you guys pulled my permit without even talking to me.
Well, did you
I'm just trying to run a
Did you intend to violate?
No, of course not. Of course not. Yes, sir. No, I did not. No, I did not. And I tried hard to show the town that I did not, and that I, the way that you wanted it is the way that it's now done. Sorry, sorry.
The Supreme Court didn't discuss the interstate commerce issue, whether or not the towns in the, in the, in the state of Vermont had a right to restrict sales to people from outside. And I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that that's probably an issue that we've got to do some research on. But I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to say that it should go one way or another, but I know under the, under the permit that that's not allowed, but unfortunately, I don't think that, that Mr. Greeno thought he was violating the law when he, when he made those sales.
No, I don't believe that I am. I don't believe I still am.
So when you got this permit, you were here with both of your attorneys at the time, right?
Yeah.
And Attorney Romeo requested a recess so that he could read what our attorney had proposed. And you and he went in, I think, the next room and went through it.
Yes.
And five and six were part of what you received that night and agreed to, and there was no request for clarification?
No, I thought it was pretty clear. Vermonters could not buy without a permit. I think that, I mean, I thought that was clear. I still think that's clear.
So you're telling us that if we contact each of the eight Vermont platers that I observed purchasing at your facility, they'll all, let me finish. They'll all verify that they have ID from another state that they presented to you in order to purchase the fireworks?
I would believe so, yes.
I didn't see you checking any ID that, even that second day, even June 30th.
I checked every ID and I took a picture of it.
Did you compare, did you take that in connection, take pictures of their license plate as well?
No. No, I
So we have no way to compare the license to the plate?
No, that's what I'm saying. What does the plate have to do with anything? It's the person that's purchasing it and their ID.
If they drive in with a Vermont registration, I expect you to see a permit.
Unless they have an out-of-state ID or someone traveling with them has an out-of-state ID.
Then you shouldn't be matching it up with the plate. You should take the picture of the ID.
You're the one matching it up with the plate, sir. I was not matching it with any plates.
In order to verify what you're telling us, because we have information that you sold to a Rutland Town resident without asking for anything.
I don't believe that is true at all. And I told you that day, I didn't believe that was true. I still don't believe that's true.
Prior to JP's first visit and your handshake with him, are there any receipts in there from sales that you made prior to that time?
No, because I wasn't asked to keep those. As soon as I was asked to keep them, I kept them.
Chip, the permit clearly requires you to keep them.
Yes, sir, from Vermont residents, which I have.
Well, that isn't quite what the conditions of the permit say.
Well, I was, I was under the assumption that the out-of-state was not what we're talking about here.
Well, the, the permit conditions don't speak to out-of-state. It says CNC shall not sell any fireworks to any person unless the purchaser produces to CNC at the time of sale a supervised public display permit issued by the Fire Chief of Rutland Town. And that's five. And then six. CNC shall not sell any fireworks to any person unless the purchaser produces to CNC at the time of sale a permit from the Fire Chief or Select Board of the municipality in which the display is located.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Read this.
Okay, well, you did read it then.
Yes, ma'am, of course I read it. Of course I have.
Okay. And let's see. See, this is under Section 7. CNC shall maintain copies of the supervised public display permit and the sales receipts attached thereto for no less than three years from the date. So you've produced these from June 30th on roughly?
29th.
29th, when JP visited, but you don't have any before that?
No, because I didn't sell to any Vermonters with permits for them.
Even, so you're saying, your argument is it's okay to sell to
Out of state.
Out-of-staters?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any authority for that, Joe?
I have no authority for it. As I said, the first time I saw Chip and his father was at 10 o'clock this morning on this. I know you sent us notice, but I didn't think it was up to me to call them and say, "What are you gonna do about this?" They called me this morning, and I said, "Yeah, you come in at 10 o'clock." And he had, he doesn't have any electricity up there, so he has his phone that he's taken all the pictures. He showed me they're in his phone. And I sent him to Staples. I told him, "Go down and get copies." And that's the best I could do, and I don't know what the general law says on interstate commerce.
Just as a courtesy, we did, I did have Bill Sweet scan the Notice of Violation and send it to you and Charles.
You did. Thank you very much. But then I said, "Our work was done. It was over. We'd closed the file." And I didn't think it was up to me to call and say, "Hey, you got a problem." I waited till they called me, and they called me this morning.
Okay, because this was served, I think, on June 30th.
That's right. We got it right off. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. Do any other Select Board members have any questions of either witness? Sharon?
I just would like to make a statement, and I know it's hearsay, but I gotta tell you, Chip. My stepson came to my house last week. I said, "What are you doing in town?" He lives in Rupert. "Oh, I came to CNC fireworks to get some fireworks." I said, "Did you, did they ask you for a permit?" "No." I said, "Didn't ask you for a permit?" "No." Now, he had a Vermont license, a Vermont plate on his car check. Now, it was not you that waited on him. It was some female. That's all I know. Now, he had no reason to lie to me because he didn't even know that there were any of that going on. And I'm gonna be honest with you. When this all came up, the only reason I listened to you and to what you had to say is because of your aunt, because I have a lot of respect for that lady. So I, let me finish. So I, I listened to her. She said, "You were really upset." And I said, "Well, he's coming in, and we'll talk to him." And, you know, I have a lot of respect for her, and I did for Brian. And that's why I listened to you and I heard you out. So you know, maybe you're not telling your staff what they have to do, but that's your responsibility, not ours. You know, I don't know. I know he made one.
We'll treat that as an argument.
Yeah.
Not a, not a bad argument. Just, no, no, it's okay to say, a point of discussion. And we hear that, but I don't think we have to respond to it.
No, you don't. I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Your points made.
People, I mean, everybody makes a mistake. I mean, out of that many people going through there.
I do not even have a woman working for me. I don't even have a woman that works there.
Well, I don't know.
Ma'am, I am not trying to be
There's no reason to lie to me, Chip.
Listen, I have every reason, I guess, to lie to you, except I don't have a woman that works there.
Well, there was a woman in there, and unless one of your men has long hair, and I don't know.
They do not. They do not. I mean, I can't argue something that is hearsay. I can't argue something when I don't even have a woman that works for me. I am very sorry
I know that he got
That you seem upset by that.
The fireworks. He got them at your place.
Oh.
And he was not asked for a permit.
Okay, Joe Donardo, Select Board member, do you have any questions of either of the witnesses?
I don't, Mary. I just have one question for you, though. Are you there?
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, my question is, if I understand, and I don't, and I apologize for not having that paperwork from the last meeting in front of me, but I understand that Items 5 and 6 clearly state that they're required to get a copy of a permit, a display permit, and there was no mention of Vermont resident or out-of-state resident. It just said that they, that if they sold fireworks, the individual buying the fireworks had to have a display permit. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, yes, the phrase is "any person."
Any person. Doesn't stipulate Vermont, okay. I just wanted you to clear that up. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So we've received some exhibits that we'll probably want to look for, look through. Any further questions, what we'll do is adjourn this, not adjourn the whole meeting, but adjourn this portion of it and take this under advisement and take a look at what the exhibits are that you've brought in. JP, anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay. Sharon? Joe, all set?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Joe, the other Joe.
Mr. Hahn, I don't know whether or not, first, I'd like to ask Chip why Mr. Hahn was there and who he is and what, what his relationship is with you.
He's a friend of mine that does stuff all the time, Dr. Summer. He's a firework enthusiast. He's a firework enthusiast. He does, he's a friend of mine since high school. He allows me to run the arms, like when I have to resupply, he was there just while I was running to go get more supplies from the warehouse. He was just covering the bench.
Mr. Hahn, can you hear okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So when Mr. Hahn called you, as I understand it, you were either in Pittsburgh or on your way back?
Yes, I was on my way back.
And you came down and Mr. Fagnant was there, Mr. Hahn was there?
Yes, yes. And I thought we had a good discussion. I thought that we had a back and forth. And when I left there, you asked me to do this, and we shook hands, and that's exactly what I did. And I'm not, it's exactly what I did. And I've done it every day since you asked me. So
I don't know if we need a formal motion, but we offer these exhibits and
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna take them as exhibits, yes.
Thank you, okay. And you're gonna, you'll get back to us, but not tonight.
We've got to find a time that we can go through the exhibits, have Joe Donardo come in as well, because he's not here tonight. He's participating by phone.
Thank you, John, for these exhibits. Thank you.
Okay, are those any that we should see, JP?
Yeah, we have, we have copies for the board.
Okay.
They just document the purchases.
Do you have any objection to us looking at these? Okay, very good. Then we're all set with the exhibits.
I just might add, there are several, several things that I can sell to Vermonters.
Yes. Yes, you can sell, I'm just remembering, you can sell sparklers and novelty smoke, something, something, yeah, okay, yeah.
Chip also tells me there's no requirement for what he sells for a federal permit. Is that right?
The ATF does not regulate the things that we sell, just so the board knows that that's in the permit. The 1.4 is the chemical that they use in commercial fireworks, Class C fireworks that I have. That has no ATF involvement because it's not as reactive as the 1.4, such as the fireworks that the town bought from North Star and had displayed. Those are 1.4. That's a, that's an ATF-regulated chemical, and these are, these are not regulated, unregulated.
Did you tell me these are 1.3?
1 point, these are 1.4. The 1.3 is what the town buys from North Star. There's, that's a special license to store those, special license to, like, those special, not permit license. So it's completely different, just so the board knows.
I appreciate that clarification.
It's not the same as the big area. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in. We'll get back to you as soon as we pull us all together to deliberate and
Thank you.
Okay, so that's item A under new business. Barbara Noise Pulling, are we waiting for um, MSK Engineering?
No, he's, Mister Mulligan's here.
He's here in your office or here, here?
He's, he's on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on my computer if that's okay. And let me know.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objection, well, we did have two folks come in and join us. Um, are you on the agenda for tonight's meeting? Ah, are they tomorrow night? Yeah. Yeah, I know. Okay, you know what? I was putting down July seventh on everything today anyways, so you're welcome to stay, but we understand if you go. Okay, thank you, folks. Okay, um, so why don't we shift to Barbara Noise Pulling and the MSK Engineering on the Pocket, Pocket Park. And if you will pull item H out of your packet. And Barbara, will you um, set the stage for us, please?
Okay, um, yeah, a few meetings back, you accepted the bid from MSK Engineers to do the land survey um, for the Pocket Park property to be. Um, and that property is owned by both the town and Green Mountain Power. So um, since then, MSK um, has been working on an agreement. Have in front of you a work authorization, um, which describes what the work will be. And then they added a short form of agreement, and I believe you have a copy of that. Um, that it covers their contractual language with, with clients. Uh, I worked with MSK on the work authorization. Uh, the other agreement is, I just saw that uh, last week before it was mailed out to you. Um, it seems to be a boilerplate uh, agreement. And um, I think before the town signs that one, we would need to make some minor changes to that. Namely, that the, the town of Rutland is called the owner. And then the payment provisions and invoicing um, indicates that all of that goes through the town where that should go through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, which is the administrator of this grant paying for the survey.
Okay, um, and who's the representative from MSK that's here with us virtually?
My name is Amy Mulligan. I am the chief surveyor for the company, so I will be performing the work with uh, my assistant.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mister Mulligan, you've heard Barbara's concerns. Can you get us a document that contains those changes to clarify that it's actually the town owns a little of the property, but Green Mountain Power owns the rest? And let us know what you require from GMP in order to you know, do the surveying on their property.
I think that if you are willing to provide me with a marked up copy of, of what we sent you, um, I will have the changes made as soon as possible and get a revised copy back to you for if, I don't know if this is something that you will require for the next meeting. But I'm, I'm happy to assist.
Okay, all right. So, and what's your schedule for completing the survey?
Uh, my goal is to get up there next week to begin the deed research and reconnaissance of the property, followed by following week, uh, doing the field work, which will include the boundary survey as well as the uh, topographic and feature survey um, that, uh, that you have requested. Um, I've already spoken to an underground utility locator um, so that we can have them on site while we are there, uh, so that we can work hand in hand with them and, and basically follow them, picking up whatever they, they're able to find on the ground or underneath the ground for that matter.
Uh, Mary, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, as we all know. Um, but does it make sense to go ahead with the work authorization and to come back to that other agreement?
Yeah, I mean, the work authorization itself does reference the fact that GMP is the primary landowner. So um, and the services required, but that's, that's up to the comfort level of Mister Mulligan. If we just authorized and signed one and, and re, revise the short for, form of agreement later. It's really um.
I, I'm fine with that. And then we'll, we'll just make sure that we make the changes that you're requesting and get, get it back to you as soon as possible so that, that we can, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. So to the select board members, um, have you had a chance to review these documents, letter H in your packet? And is there any motion?
Move to approve.
John Paul moved to approve the work authorization. Um, both forms or just the work authorization?
Just the work authorization.
Okay, and that would um, also include me signing on behalf of the select one?
Correct.
Okay, Sharon seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Uh, Joe, you're in favor of the motion, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So motion carries. And the work authorization has been approved and we will get those changes to you. Barbara, remind me that we need to put our heads together on that one.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm probably signing the wrong one and Bill will tell me later. Okay. Thank you. Well, and thank you, Mister Mulligan, for your company's interest. We're pretty excited about this project. Uh, I'm sure Barbara has shared what, what we're planning to do here and we're looking forward to working with you on that.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate your time and I look forward to the, to providing you with uh, the, the survey and plan.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so that takes care of H, letter H under new business, and I think it's, unless there's some, somebody else who needs something taken out of order, we'll go back up to our department head reports. Oh, there is one thing that I do wanna mention. Um, I received a a phone call this morning from Mayor Laire of Rutland City raising the issue of what the town and the city might together do to talk with the state about the um, traffic situation or the, well, the deaths of pedestrians on the Route Seven South in town and near the city border. Um, so we spoke briefly, I think he is speaking tonight to the city board of alderpersons. And the suggestion is that we have a joint meeting. We have an intermunicipal committee, uh, John Paul Fagnon's on it, I'm on it. And we will be um, meeting with city representatives to see if there's a common approach we can make to understand what has happened with those pedestrian accidents and see if something further can be done to get the state's attention and make changes if any are necessary down there. So I wanted to inform you of that. It will, there was an article in the paper today. And there will likely be a follow-up article because I think the mayor is going to raise this, this evening in front of the Board of Aldermen. Okay. Yes.
Mary, just a quick comment on what you just said.
Yep.
One of the things when you have that meeting that would go a long ways toward helping with this is the enforcement of the speed limits on the Route Seven corridor, both in Rutland Town and Rutland City. That is a major problem on that road.
And, and the mayor and I both acknowledged that there was a lot of speeding going on. He is also concerned about Route Seven north of the city and, and the north part of the city and into the town. So I think we're gonna be talking about the whole corridor. So thank you, Joe, for that.
Yeah.
Okay, Carrie Clark.
Good evening. Um, I am just returning from being out of the office for about a week, so I don't have very much to report tonight. Um, I did check on our ARPA funds and they have not been received yet.
Do you need anything further from us?
I don't believe so. What I have read is, um, as long as we have applied, which I did before I um, left for the week, then we just kind of.
Okay.
Wait, is what I'm under the impression of.
Okay, let us know if you need anything more.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And uh, we began our new fiscal year, so everything's fresh and ready to go. And I really don't have anything further to talk about.
Well, welcome back.
Yeah, I was gonna say you looked all relaxed and, yeah.
It was a good.
A little sunburned.
It was a good time.
Good. Any questions of select board members for Carrie? Just checking through quickly to see if there's anything. And I think most of the other things relate to other folks. Well, let me, we will, we will be dealing with, and we probably should now, um, item G, which is the uh, approval requested by the select board for the unlicensed dogs. This is the sad part of what we do. I don't think we've actually gotten as far, but this allows our uh, chief of police and deputy chief to destroy any dogs who have not been licensed. Um, what was the cutoff date? I know.
Terrible language.
Isn't it?
Yeah. Let's not let it get to that point. Um, so I, I did the letter to hand over to the police department. I want to say, just before I left on the twenty second, twenty six maybe, is when I dated it. There were some dogs on the list, so um, I'm just gonna put it out there for anyone listening that they might wanna get their dogs registered before you get that phone call. Because it's a terrible word.
Yeah, it is a terrible word. I think we've avoided having this happen, but nevertheless, it is the law. And there are fifty-five dogs on the list. So if you care for your dogs, folks, please uh, call into the town clerk and make arrangements to have the dogs licensed or let her know if they have moved to another town or have died or whatever, so.
That's a good point. You know, if they've passed away, we do make note of that so that uh, we're not bothering the families that have had that dog pass away. And you know, it's just, it's not fun to get that phone call. But um, this is one of the little things that I do as town clerk is the dogs and um, I did notice the big impact of um, why we do what we do with these dogs as far as tagging them. Uh, I got a phone call recently and someone had found a dog wandering on a very busy route. Um, and it just so happened to have a, a tag on. They called me. I was able to look who, what, look up who it was and um, give them the phone number and that person was able to get their dog back. I mean, it's pretty powerful.
It's.
It's not just because we do it, it's because you love your dogs and you don't want anything to happen to them.
I had a similar experience. I brought my dog up to Maine for a visit and she got out of her enclosure, went next door. They saw her tag from the town of Rutland, saw the Vermont car next door and gave a call to my, my friend who was housing us. So thank you very much. Okay, so the warrant is item G. I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrant.
Move to approve.
Motion's made by JP.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the warrant, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, that'll be here for your signature too, folks. Anything else? Any questions for Carrie? If not, thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, Barbara Noise Pulling, Town Planning Commission chair.
Okay.
Hi, Barbara.
Hello, back again. I don't have much. Um, do wanna bring you up to date on the stormwater grant for the MS four up at Windmere Housing Project. Uh, Andres Toriso is doing a, a design um, for that stormwater basin pond up there. And um, he met, along with Byron and myself, um, we met with the, some of the homeowners up there last week. And just to give them a very preliminary idea of what he's thinking. It turns out that because there's been more development up there, more houses built in Windmere. Um, there's more rooftops, so there's more um, impervious surfaces, if you know that term. So there's more storm water going into the drains. So the existing pond needed, does need to be um, expanded, made bigger to accommodate that extra storm water. And uh, Andres' idea right now is to do, just to add on a pond to what's, what's there. The homeowners, uh, the homeowners are thinking that over. There's a new homeowner that just bought a house right next door to where that pond is now. So they're now looking at uh, an extra big pond, uh, which you don't really see standing water very often, just in the extreme storms. Um, it's mostly a cattail marsh most of the time. So um, to meet their, their permit that they have with the state, um, they do need to do something. And Andres has also asked them uh, what their future expansion development plans are. So he can get an idea of whether, you know, he's got a big enough pond, even expanding it to two. So that's, they're, they're mulling that over and they're talking with Andres and he's talking to the folks at Albatello as well as uh, Windmere. And they're trying to work out something so Andres can proceed with coming up with uh, his first design for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, it occurs to me that some of the ARPA funds may be available for use in stormwater runoff. Has the regional, shifting hats now, Regional Planning Commission discussed that at all?
I'll have to double check that. Um, I'm not, not certain right off the bat, um, but I think I have heard that um, there is a staff person at the Regional Planning Commission who um, who is much more up on the ARPA funds than I am, that I can check, check on that and get back to Bill. Is that?
Sure, yeah, thanks. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Any questions from select board members for Barbara or the Planning Commission? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
The only thing that I have is the item on your agenda. Kinda look for which one it is.
Yeah.
Uh, E. Um, there are three grant agreements there, one at forty-seven thousand dollars and two at two hundred thousand dollars each.
Okay, so we'll start with E, which appears to be the Gleason Road Grant. That's.
That's the forty-seven thousand dollar one, yes.
I think Bill started a small and he's working up to big, so.
Yeah, that's the better backroads grant.
Okay, and the town share is?
That's a fifty-fifty grant.
Okay.
And we are budgeted for the other cost. And the bids came in much lower than was anticipated, so we're gonna be in good shape there.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to sign um, E, which is for Gleason Road culvert replacement? Is that what it was? Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay with me signing on behalf of the board?
Yes.
Okay. A motion's made and seconded to approve the Gleason Road culvert grant. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And I'll say aye opposed. Okay. The next is item E. Looks like E two. E two in your packet, which is another grant. It's for, why don't you tell me what it's for?
I don't know which one it is. There's two of them there. One, each one of them is for two hundred thousand. One is a class-two paving grant for Town Line Road.
Okay.
The other is a two hundred thousand dollar grant for the culvert replacement on Town Line Road with a large box culvert and realigning of the brook.
Okay, and do we, is this, are these both matches as well?
Yes.
And we have the money budget is for.
Those grants have a maximum amount of two hundred thousand dollars. They are eighty, the structures grant is eighty percent funding. I hope I got this right. That's eighty percent funding up to two hundred thousand dollars. And the structures grant, which is the culvert replacement part of that Town Line Road project, that is ninety percent funding up to two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Well, essentially that, that structures grant will pay for half of the Town Line Road culvert and. The paving grant will cover eighty percent of the cost of, of the Town Line Road resurfacing.
Okay. Is there a motion with regard to these two grant agreements?
Second.
Motion's made to approve and authorize me to sign on behalf of the board?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, anyone opposed? Not motion carries. Okay. Could you join us after for a brief executive session?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anything else for Byron? Very quiet. No questions. Oh, roadside mowing. I asked you that coming.
Roadside mowing is hopefully with a technician stopping by hopefully tomorrow. To get that hydraulic pump so it's functioning properly. I think there's a check valve in there that maybe um, not doing what it's supposed to do. That tractor is all ready to go.
Okay.
The uh, the, our. I don't know, it's right, we're just, our youngest employee, I guess, had a little boo-boo today on his arm. Um, and they, uh, the medical people have asked him to stay out of work until Friday and then he'll be back full-time next week.
Okay, good. Does he do roadside mowing?
Yes.
Okay, so he'll be back in time though.
There will be, if that, as soon as that tractor's ready to go, there will be someone in that tractor full-time.
Great, thank you very much.
To get caught up.
Alright, any further questions of our road commissioner?
When is the apron work gonna be done on McKinley? You got a lot of unhappy people on McKinley.
I'm aware of that. We are starting tomorrow morning. Got uh, the first load will be of ten ton will be at uh, just after seven o'clock. Weather permitting, and then there's a couple gravel driveways. If we, if weather doesn't permit paving, we will get the gravel driveways done.
So can we tell folks that you're gonna feather back as far as necessary to avoid them?
Absolutely, I have an issue. You'll drive by, I think you'll find that most of those driveways are all marked, some of them back as much as fifteen feet. We will take care of that.
And the Hendys are gonna make sure there's a swale in there so he doesn't get his building.
I think what he wants is to have that. At, at one angle, so when the snowplow goes across it, it'll, it'll take all the snow out, whereas if you do too much of a curl, then the plow. You know, catches both outside corners and leaves snow in the middle, but yes, that uh, will uh, will be addressed and taken care of.
And um, the quirks are, seem to be concerned that the.
That, that the. I'm all square with Donnie.
And the septic tanks in front?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, we're all square with Donnie and uh, I've got young Joe Russo gonna help us with the handwork.
Yeah, and then that young sergeant right above the fire station, he's got quite a, quite a lip on his.
That's the name, uh, Wayhead, right?
Wayhead.
Yeah, I, I gave him just a, a Band-Aid and uh, I've gotta get uh, some crushed uh, asphalt, cause that's what his driveway is, so. It'll match and get smoothed in. That's one of the driveways, if we're not able to pave because of rain tomorrow, we'll get that driveway done.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks for that Byron.
Yep.
Okay. Next up, Chris Clark, Fire Chief.
You get to go on vacation too, chief?
She did let me this time, yes.
Alright, welcome back.
Thank you. I really have nothing to report. Um, fireworks at Northwood went well the other night. No, no issues. Those guys are pretty professional. One thing I just wanted to ask, I talked a couple weeks ago about the, our current engine three, which is completely out of service now. Joe was talking about selling it. The condition it's in, talking to the mechanic, he would not put his name on selling that. So do we have any other suggestions or do you want me to write up something and put Joey's name on it? Cause he told me not to put my name on it.
Well, well, there, there, there's value in the vehicle, whether it be parted out or not.
Right.
And, and selling it as is, you know, with a clear representation, it's not a functional engine. We don't incur any liability.
Right, okay.
Because that's.
I think. Chris, I think if you sell that with the, with the um, knowledge to the buyer that um, it was taken out of service because of uh. Damage or rotted frame and it is not roadworthy vehicle and, you know, the prices, what somebody's gonna pay for is gonna reflect, reflect in that. You're not gonna get what it would be worth if it was a quality truck, cause if it was a quality truck, we wouldn't be selling it. But I think that's all you gotta do is just, just make sure that whoever, you know, I would advertise it to be sold as is. And, and, and where is, and that it is not um, in the uh, eyes of our mechanic a roadworthy vehicle and make sure people know that. And I would see what you get for prices. I, I just feel them out, see what they'll take, what somebody'd offer you on it.
Okay.
Just, just keep in, keep in mind, that truck is worth, if it were to be cut up and brought to a scrapyard, it's worth about two hundred dollars a ton.
Yeah, it's not worth doing that.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying, and, and see what uh, you know, what, what somebody will pay for it.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I don't, you know, without stripping the body off, you know, and, and getting to the frame and actually see what the damage is, somebody might be able to take that and make a. Different sized truck out of it.
Right. I was talking to Chief Lovett in the city, they have the same issue. And theirs is currently sitting at Earl's waiting for scrap prices to go up.
Okay.
So.
Two hundred dollars is about as high, I think, as it's gonna go.
Yeah.
But I might be wrong. I might be wrong.
Well, it just.
Cause that, uh, and, yeah, I think engine three is an aluminum body, right?
Yeah.
If I recall it, yeah, that's an aluminum body, so I don't know what the value of that is, but that hail pump does have some value, even though it isn't. One of the better pumps that hail built. Um, you've got a really good motor in there and a really good automatic transmission. I mean, parted out, those vehicles are worth, that stuff's worth some money to the right person, so.
Yeah.
So I'd, I'd get it out there, put it online or do something and, you know, see what you can get for it.
Alright, well, it just so happens like JP always says, I know a guy.
Don't be taking my guy, though.
And if I can, if I can be of any help, Chris, let me know.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Good.
Yep.
Any other questions of our town fire chief? Or letting you off easy. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Town Police Chief Ed Dumas. Evening Chief.
Good evening. I got your guys, the uh. Calls to service a little late, apologize for that, but we do have them here.
Did get them, yeah.
It's, notice there's an increase in traffic stops, uh, we can thank our new officer, Angie Shermerhorn. She's doing a great job for us. Uh, did have a meeting last Friday, referenced the holiday and there was a two-week extension. On uh, service there, but it was only for two clients trying to work with that. It's not a lot. Some clients weren't there to receive their checks from the state, so they may still be there. When they do, and I guess there's, we got a list today, there, it's gone down by half and there's like. Thirty-three with children, I think fourteen children or something like that nature, so, but the people are there now are paying out of pocket from the money they got from the state as well, I, I've been told. So that's, well, that's, with that, and yes, we have had some issues on Route Seven South as far as pedestrians are concerned. Uh, as I mentioned before, I, I know Joe said something that people do speed on South Main Street, but. I don't wanna give people the idea that these accidents were caused by speed, cause we don't know that for sure.
Okay.
Till investigation is completed by uh, the state police.
Okay, and they were down there doing the investigation right after.
Correct, they were.
Okay, so you'll let us know when?
When I find out something. I did speak to one of the, it's kinda hearsay, so I don't wanna say a lot.
Okay.
I don't think speed, they didn't think speed was factor, but I don't know, so.
Okay.
Get official results. That's about all I have at this point in time.
Okay.
Oh yeah, we did uh, the vehicle that we ordered uh, is complete and we should get it hopefully soon.
Wow.
Yeah, so we were quite excited to hear that from nothing to something.
Yeah, good.
Where's the other cruiser?
The one, we sold the other one.
Transfer station.
We sold the other one. We sold the one to the sheriffs.
Right.
The other one's parked at uh, the uh. What do you call it? The uh, House Center for Repairs.
Okay.
They had to order parts for it and the parts came in, they were the wrong parts, so it's waiting for new parts. Hopefully this Thursday it'll be fixed.
Do they have to do with the steering? I don't know.
It had to do with the uh. Uh, the rear end. We heard the second constable beat the car. That's not true.
Unless anybody asks you questions, I remember that.
Um, how much do we get for the, the cruiser that we sold?
Well, that's a story because we have a check for five thousand.
Okay.
We have not cashed yet because uh, we're trying to obtain the title. Deputy Chief Washburn has been working on it for over two weeks now. Uh, we got apparently the ally bought the company that had the, the original lease or something of that nature, so. But nobody has a copy of the lease or the, of the title. For the cars and the state wants us to have somebody sign off on it and we're doing this through emails and, and faxes to, to departments. And so far, we have not had much luck, but we get the whole process down. We plan to get the title to the truck and the title to the other cruiser. And by the title of my cruiser, so that we don't have to go through this in the future.
Okay.
If you don't get a response pretty soon, have Kevin write a letter because there's a statute in Vermont, they only have a certain amount of time to give you your title once you pay the loan off.
Yeah, thirty days, I think. It's real short.
I thought it was twenty-one, it might be thirty.
I'm thinking real estate, so.
They, that, no one seems to know where the title is. They say, oh, just sign this and get you, get a Vermont to print you a new one. Vermont says, no, we're not doing that.
Really? Cause there is a form that allows you to do that, I thought.
But they want you to testify to a lost title you never had?
Correct.
Okay.
This is where I, I will get touch you here.
Okay.
Maybe tomorrow.
It's a big stick.
Okay.
Alright, good. Any other questions from the select board for Chief Dumas?
Uh, I have a, I have a thank, thank you for the chief for his assistance last Wednesday. While we were trying to locate a runaway dog on Linda Drive. And him and uh, Bill helped us out and the little dog came back on his own, cause he's smarter than all the humans that were looking for him. So thank you guys for your help.
Thanks, chief.
Yeah, also to the, uh, just one more thing, as far as the uh, language on the report that we're gonna euthanize all the dogs that are uh, registered, I. We'd never done that.
Right.
I would never do that. We would make sure, talk to people.
We've always worked with.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
Yeah.
Language is ugly and all the court clerks seem to have this, think we're gonna shoot it off.
It is pretty ugly.
But it's required.
Yes, I know.
We, we have to do it and it usually does prompt people to cooperate and get their dogs licensed, so. Okay, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
How are you? Nice to see you guys.
Yeah.
A couple things. Fireworks went off. Thank Chris and, and Ed and everybody that helped out. I thought it was uh, pretty smooth. Crowd was. I don't know, what do you think about normal? I don't know what really normal is. It wasn't that big. I think a lot of those other towns are doing their fireworks as well. Which helps us out greatly. Um, but the crowd was great and they got out of there quick. The fireworks were very well uh, displayed. So thanks to them and it, it worked really well and smoothly.
Good.
Swim lessons went really well, uh, just so you know that. And we're starting next session. They can sign up tomorrow night. They won't see this, but they can sign up tomorrow night. We've been allowing a group in at a time to just kinda keep our numbers down inside the pool. That's worked very well. A lot of people, because it's been humid lately, a lot of uh, a lot of people have been coming to the pool, which is great. Spread out and uh, and, and all that. Senior lunch that was on our meeting was very successful up at Sugar and Spice.
So it's fun.
And speaking of the senior lunch, we are doing it on the twenty-seventh.
What are you looking at me for?
Cause I want you to be there, cause Byron's cooking.
Do I qualify?
Well, if I do, you do. No disrespect.
So you're making, he's a senior citizen, you're making him cook?
I've made him cook for every time we've done it. Well, it's his beef too, so you know, he's kinda got a special way with.
Seniors for seniors, we get.
Exactly.
July twenty-seventh, at what time, Mr. Rowe?
We are starting usually at eleven-thirty is when we start to eat, so people get there about eleven. It is rain or shine.
Okay.
You are more than welcome to contact me at seven-seven-nine-two-five-one-eight and leave your name like a lovely couple did today. Or you can get in touch with Jim Hall. I don't have Jim's number.
Okay.
Just, it is in the, yeah, it's actually in the circle. So feel free to just reach out. You don't have to come. But feel free to please join us. We will be rain or shine. We have covering.
Okay, I'll be there.
Love for you guys to be.
Did you hear me? I'll be there. So mark me, I'm not calling you.
That's fine. I, whoever walks through the door or crawls through the door, however you get there is fine by us.
It is.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, trying to think. Other than that, I sent you the list of uh, lifeguards as an update. I do that every year since it's the fiscal year and it starts over again. It's been a little tricky the past couple years.
Yeah.
Because minimum wage has really kinda hop, skipped and a jump quite a bit, so. You know, that's a challenge for me and we're gonna have to increase, obviously, because that has really increased over the past couple years. So when it comes to budgeting, we'll put our heads together and figure that all out, rec committee wise.
Very good.
Other than that, I don't, I don't think I have anything. Um, unless you guys have something for me.
I do, and it's printed on pink even. So this is a um, authorization for. The recreation depreciation account to be used to reimburse the highway department for the storage barn construction. And the amount is thirty-eight-hundred-twenty-two dollars and forty-six cents. So this would be from the timber fund?
Correct.
You're sure the, your, the rec department's sure of the timber fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And so you think we should sign this?
I would hope that you do.
Okay.
Um, yes, please.
Okay.
Unless the objections and then I'll just have to borrow, it's Taser and I'll get you the money next week, so.
Okay.
Just kidding.
I'll take.
I'll have JP do it.
It doesn't taste well at all.
Later, well, later we'll have this conver, we had a conversation of fireworks. Well, we'll continue that off camera. It was a nice conversation that we had. Anyway.
Is there a motion from the select board?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to authorize that amount I just said, um, to be used from the rect depreciation account for the storage barn up at Northwood. Any questions or further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? You can sign this. It's motion carries and the select board members who are here can sign. Any further questions for Mike Rowe? I know we talked briefly about the damage to the slate signs that were along the main loop and you have an idea for.
So we, you know, I, I would ask that the people respect that people put a lot of time and effort and energy in donating time into the signage that we have at our trails. Um, and through our disc golf course. It is slate from this building here when it was re-slated. The Boy Scouts spent a lot of time for Eagle Scout projects to uh, make those trail signs. And I would ask that, you know, you respect that it is slated and it will break. That being said, we have extra slate that I can put up and for the disc golf, we went as far as we're going to. We, we took pictures of the signs beforehand when they were hand painted, cause they were. We, we took pictures of the signs beforehand when they were hand painted because they were all hand painted after, after the Boy Scouts, our volunteers that did the disc, hand painted them with the holes and location. So I, at the time said, just take a picture just in case. So they took a picture. So they're going to be printed on a different type of material that is hopefully vandalism proof-ish. And then we'll have it so that if it happens again. So I would just ask, please just be very courteous. People are wonderful walking the trails. Please remember to pick up after your dog. And uh, just, just admire the signs, please. You know, don't break them.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Evening.
Good evening.
Were you on vacation too?
I did, I did take a week off, yes.
Do you want to welcome them back?
Welcome back. Thank you. You didn't even miss it. I was on vacation. I was impressed. It was good. Uh, yes, we took, we took a little time off to, we went way away. Went to Oklahoma.
You did.
Yeah. Uh, all right, so uh, I, I moved around the agenda order a little bit. Because I was realizing that, you know, I would come up in the first and, and I'd go through all the stuff and then everybody would come up and have to go through it. So this time I'm letting them mark all the stuff off the list and then I get to it. So uh, we have only a few things left. Uh, we have uh, in the packet uh, for one of the new business items is we received the contract for winter heating oil from Johnson Energy.
So Johnson Energies, they're remembering that they are a preferred vendor. Yes.
Yes, they are.
Um, they are their number two fuel proposal. Uh, Johnson Energy will contract to deliver number two fuel oil to the town of Rutland at the following price for the period of September one, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Thirty-five cents per gallon over Johnson Energy cost on day of delivery with a maximum capped rate of two dollars, seven ninety-nine for the contract period. And there's a note, today's rate would be two dollars and fifty-seven, nine. So that is the proposal. Is there a motion to accept? Don't move. Motion is made, Joe. Motion is made and seconded. Um, any discussion? If not, all in, oh, and this is to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board too, please?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. So we have our heating oil. Okay. Next item.
Uh, the next item uh, was, is the vehicle and traffic ordinance. Uh, that was put on here uh, for certification at the request of our second constable.
Okay. So prosecuting uh, tickets, there's a judge that requires that the municipality file on the first day of the month in which hearings are scheduled, a certified copy of the speed ordinance. When I brought it to the judge's attention, we're prosecuting pursuant to a state's speed statute. Uh, he didn't miss a beat. He just said, well, I require the local ordinance to be certified and filed monthly. So that's, that's why I'm requesting we certify a copy of the speed ordinance. So Bill can start filing it with the judicial bureau.
So we, oh, so we certify it once here today.
Right.
Do we have to certify it every month?
We have to recertify if there are any changes.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're, we're submitting the same thing month after month.
Okay.
But we have to do it every month.
Every month that we have hearings scheduled, yeah.
Okey dokey.
So I will entertain a motion to certify the, yes, what he said. Motion is made and seconded. Um.
You need to listen, Mike.
Try to keep up. Move fast.
Yeah, Joe.
Jerry?
Yes.
Well, I have some, I have some concerns about the posted speed limits um, with some of these streets because I think as a board, we had voted to have Ranbury Road posted at twenty-five miles an hour. And I see that it's still listed at thirty-five and, and I wondered if all of these um, uh, subdivisions, I think that was part of our ordinance that the speed limit and all of those would be twenty-five. Cause I see like Sunset Lane. Uh, it's still thirty, but there's quite a few there that I'm wondering if, if we need to go through this and make sure those speed limits are accurate as to what we voted on.
So I, I went through all the amendments that I could find and made all the changes that I could come up with. Um, so I, I did, I did notice that too, but I, I couldn't find any that, that's, that addressed some of these. Uh, so it doesn't mean there aren't any, but we also have these on the list for the committees to discuss and that would, that we were, we would catch those and, and update them. But it is, this is as current as I can make it with everything that I could find.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of skimming through these, Joe, and the, the last um, amendments, there were a bunch of amendments in October of twenty eighteen. So and that looked like some, like Sugar Hill, Sugarwood Hill Road, Sunset Drive, Victoria Drive, Umont. Um, West Ridge Terrace and so on.
Yeah, the, the reason I bring up Ranbury Road, Mary, is if you recall when we met down there about the water line and they were testing the cars from the garage and they were screaming down the road about fifty. And I had a discussion with a mechanic who um, was very disgruntled and very abusive and obnoxious. And I brought it up at the next board meeting and I was pretty sure that um, we were going to make sure that that was posted at twenty-five. And in an area where they would be able to see that, and I think Byron took care of that. So I said, that's just something I happened to see because if I, if I recall that, that was one of the things that we did is that all of the subdivision speed limits would be twenty-five so that people would drive somewhere near that, which is really tough to get them to do.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I remember you stepping out in front of the car um, down on Ranbury Road. It was.
Right. He did slow down.
Yeah.
Did.
Yeah.
He did.
Um.
But, but I will tell you this, I will tell you this, on Post Road, when we were looking for the dog, they will not slow, slow down. They, they'll run you over before they'll slow down to twenty-five.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyway, but I just wanted to bring that up and, and you know, maybe we'll have to do a little more um, research on that. But anyway, that's my comment.
I'll have Bill take a look, but for the purposes of certifying for the court case that's going to be pending this month, we should get this done today.
Correct.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded to certify? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And aye. Okay. So I'm not exactly sure how to certify. Do you submit it with a copy of the minutes or the town clerk certifies?
Stamp that we can put on there. Stamp for Mary.
We'll, we'll.
Come up with something. If it has a, you know, ribbons and a gold seal and stuff.
We gotta do it every month. We should come up with something. So, yeah. You have to do it on the fir- by the first of the month when you intend to hold hearings.
When you're scheduled for hearings that month. So I have some hearings scheduled for August. So August first, we gotta file one.
Okay.
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 Good. Whatever you can do that looks
Well.
Pretty darned official, I would appreciate.
Something good. Yep.
Okay.
Uh, all right. Uh, the next item is uh, under D, it's the health officer appointment form. The current term expires August thirty-first and they sent us a reminder saying the term expires August thirty-first.
Okay.
So we moved to reappoint John Paul Fagnant?
That's what we're looking. Motion's made and seconded to approve John Paul Fagnant. And we, um, the certification does require a brief statement as to why John Paul Fagnant would be a good health officer. Um, I would say that he has a proven track record of diligence and attention to detail as exhibited by his work on the various holiday in complaints that we have had. So we are very satisfied with his service and would recommend him highly.
You're here.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, and you're authorizing me to sign uh, as chair of the local board of health?
Yes.
Okay. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Obstain.
And one abstention.
Okay.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, JP, for doing this again.
Uh, the last item in the packet is uh, just the current meeting schedule and committee items uh, should be up to date. Um, we have a water sewer committee meeting coming up on Friday, so we should hopefully be able to knock off uh, at least two or three of those items on there. Um, and that's, that's everything that was in the packet. Uh, on the desk, there was one additional item we received from the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region. Our annual dues. Uh, they're combined now where we, we don't pay them. The two different organizations paid to the one now. Uh, so that's thirty-nine hundred for the coming year.
Okay. And there is a note here on the um, letterhead that says your combined total. Oh, dues will be reduced to thirty-seven hundred from thirty-nine hundred.
Oh.
So they actually went down, so. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve payment to the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region in the amount of thirty-seven hundred.
So move.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Sure.
Hi, I said aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. It doesn't look like we have to sign this. We just have to send them a check and that will confirm
Yeah.
that we approve it. Okay.
Uh, all right. Uh, through uh, for the Diamond Run Mall, we were expecting Joe Anthony a couple of meetings ago to come. Um, uh, he has said through his local employee uh, that they plan to attend on July twentieth.
Okay.
So I believe that would be the next meeting. Uh, so they are, they have the meeting information and uh, said they would be in attendance for that. Um, we have had a couple open door issues down there and I've reached out to him and they've corrected them pretty quickly. So they're responsive to, to those. So
Good.
Uh, they, but so they plan to attend on the twentieth. Um, I've not heard anything yet on the VLCT grant. I reached out to, to them this morning, but I didn't hear anything back yet. So I don't know. Either way, our safety grant, yeah. Yeah, we're still waiting to hear on that. Uh, I met uh, last week with Frank Heald from the Alpine Pipeline.
Yeah.
Um, he wanted to come in after we sent them the letter. He says they kind of got them kickstarted to figure out who's where and got them separated. We said it helped them. Uh, so he gave me a bunch of history on there. So we're, we're, we're in good shape now and they're, they're, they're very happy. Um, especially since it's not over. And uh, lastly, um, been working for a, a couple of months with uh, Image Setters, who does our website work on a calendar tool, which is now live. Uh, and so if you go to our homepage, uh, rutlandtown.com uh, where the events used to be listed is now a calendar. So it shows uh, the full month view. Uh, every time there's an event that has a circle next to it there and all the details for all the events are posted there. So we did like the senior luncheon. We can post uh, more easily like days were closed, all sorts of things. So it's, it's a one stop uh, place for all the events. Um, we can do notices, all sorts of things there. So it's, it's a, we're ve- very happy that got done. Now we're just waiting for the new year to be able to kick in, to be able to pay for it. So. And that is everything I have.
Okay. You know, as you were talking, one other thing we should add to the letter as to why we're recommending JP is all of his work on monitoring the whole COVID nineteen crisis and advising the board um, and townspeople on how to deal with that.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Um, any questions of Bill Sweet? Hi, thank you very much. All right, next, John Paul Fagnant, Town Health Officer.
Oh, nothing new to report, although I do have a situation that I'm going to be seeking some assistance from Kevin on through the health officer budget. We have a, a difficult situation that we're addressing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, committee meeting updates. Bill just went through um, the committee list. We do have upcoming water sewer committee meeting. Did any other committees meet? I can't even remember. Seems like we keep meeting on stuff. All right. Um, update on project list. Um, they are posted. I still need to reach out to a couple of folks on the town hall monument committee. Um, Pocket Park, we heard uh, tonight and we've moved forward on that. Pedestrian Quarter. Um, oh, I noticed that the Act two fifty permit was applied for and there was a notice in the paper and it's being processed as a minor amendment. So hopefully we won't have a hearing. We'll just get the signed permit. End of, was it August twenty-sixth or so? Something like that. Okay. Um, I think most everything else is there. So check if you're on. Um, McKinley Avenue Fire Station, we were going to meet tonight, but because Dawn was in um, for surgery, we decided not to do that. And Bill is gonna, Bill and the chief somewhere will figure out another date when we can all come together. Okay. Thank you.
Mary, one, one comment on the uh, fire department or fire station uh, committee meeting. Um, I would like to see us have those meetings on a night other than a select board meeting. I think that that just makes it a little rough to try to get two meetings done and stuff. I think those should be a standalone night. Just something to pass on to Chris is, if he's going to be scheduling them.
Okay. Okay. So noted. Thank you, Joe. Okay. So down under new business, we've taken care of the CNC fireworks matter other than scheduling a uh, time to review the evidence and make a decision. Uh, we have done the Johnson Energy contract. We have certified the vehicles and traffic ordinance. We have appointed a town health officer or recommended the appointment to the state. We have approved the grant applications for the highway department. There were three of them. Um, we have done the approval of using rec department money from the timber fund for the storage barn. Who else contributed to that? Highway and police. Is the police anteed up yet? Okay. Okay, okay. Okay. Everybody's good. Okay, thanks. Um, G, the board to review for approval, the unlicensed dog warrant, we took care of that. We visited with MSK about the Pocket Park. Um, content, I, board to discuss contents of select board meeting minutes. I think this came about because one of the, one of the sets of minutes that we had early on was fourteen pages long. Seventeen pages long and it triggered among a couple of the older board members, older in time, not necessarily in age. Um, that we had raised the question some time ago when Patty, our, the administrative assistant to to Joe's and Gally at the time was doing the minutes and they were very, very long minutes and they were very detailed. And unfortunately, they were taking up a very large amount of her time because they were so detailed. So our recollection then was that that we had advised the um, administrative officer to keep the minutes to the basic facts and the motions made and so on. And the last couple of sets of minutes have reflected that concern. Is there anything further that we need to do about the minutes? Okay. Well, thank you, Bill. I think the minutes as they've been coming through are perfectly fine and I appreciate them. Um, down under old business, um, the purchase of air purifiers, I know Dawn was speaking to or wanted to speak to. He's not on the phone tonight. Joe, Donardo, um, you're part of the building committee. Do we address this tonight?
Well, we, we haven't really, Dawn and I haven't got together and we haven't, I haven't really looked over the proposal. Dawn and I haven't got together and we haven't, I haven't really looked over the proposal that's before us and whether or not um, we're gonna act, we may have to put that out. If we're gonna do it, we, we may have, have bids if it, uh, the total amount, you know, and staying with the purchasing policy. So, uh, we'll need to review that. And I believe that would be something that we could use those, um, ARP funds for. So we're kind of just, kind of just waiting, kind of in a little waiting pattern. I don't like spending money till I see it in my hand. Um, and then at that point, I think we'll address it.
Okay.
Dawn did reach out to another vendor who just recently sent me a proposal. So it's gonna have to be reviewed by the committee.
Okay. Okay. So we got a couple of proposals now. All right. So we'll hold on that as old business. Item B, the board to establish a policy for signs on town-owned property. Um, last week I went to the school board meeting, the Rutland Town School Board, mostly to let them know about the ARPA listening session we had. But the school board member Jeff Colom approached me and said, you know, we need, the town and the school need to talk about, uh, consistent policy on campaign signs, both at the school, which is a polling place and at the town office, which is a polling place. So, um, the school and, and the town should put together a small committee to work on a combined, that would be my recommendation, a combined, um, set of rules and see what the two boards think of them. So we have some consistency. The school was doing it a little bit differently than what we were doing here. I think Carrie might want to say a few things about that or, or not. Pardon? Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Our town clerk, anyone would like else who would like to serve on that committee?
Okay.
I'll nominate Dawn.
And Sharon. Okay. So Carrie, Dawn and Sharon from the town side. Very good. Um. I think since I can just appoint members, I don't have to. We don't need to vote on.
That's right.
Okay. Very good. So I'll do that. Thank you. All right. And I think that completes what I have in front of me. Um, the back row, to the extent you might not have gone to sleep yet. Are there any comments that any one of you would like to make?
Move to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn?
We're gonna go in the executive.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We gotta go into executive session. Sorry. Um, so there are two executive sessions. One with highway to discuss some personnel issues and one with police likewise to discuss personnel issues. Is that? Uh, so. Um, I'll entertain the motions.
Can move.
Yep. Motion made and seconded to go into executive session. We'll start with highway. All in favor of the motions, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So we'll ask Byron to stay for the first and then switch for the chief to come in on the second. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
All a po-po.
Go ahead.
Hey, um, all of police in the town are paid on an hourly basis. I'd make that motion.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Move to adjourn.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Have a good evening, everybody. Motion carries.